Thank you, San. The June 21st, 2023 meeting of the Seattle City Council's Public Assets and Homelessness Committee will come to order. It is 2:00 PM. I am Andrew Lewis, Chair of the Committee. Councilmember Morales is excused from today's meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Council President Juarez.
Here.
Councilmember Mosqueta.
Here.
Chair Lewis.
Present.
Chair, there are four members present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Approval of the agenda. If there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Chairs' report. Today, we have two public hearings, and those public hearings will occur during Agenda Items Two and Three. If you have called in for those public hearings or are here in person to comment on those public hearings, you will not hear your name called during the public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Instead, your name will be called to provide comment during the appropriate public hearing at that point in the agenda. And again, those items are Two and Three. So stand by if you are signed in to comment on those and wait until those agenda items. With that, we will now open the public comment period on our general agenda items. And that period will be moderated by the committee clerk and for two-minute speaking times.
Mr. Chair, no members of the public have signed up for public comment.
Okay, given that we have no members of the public signed up for public comment, we will close the public comment period. Moving on to items of business. Will the committee clerk please read Item One into the record?
Item One, Appointment 02580. Appointment of Ashraf Hasham as a member Climate Pledge Arena Giving Council for a term to June 30th, 2026.
Thank you so much, Mr. Clerk. We are joined by Morgan Littlefield, along with our appointee, Ashraf Hasham. Morgan, would you like to speak first and introduce the nominee? And then we can give Ashraf an opportunity to address the committee.
Mr. Chair, Morgan Littlefield has been having some technical difficulties, but I see she has just joined us in the Zoom meeting, so may not have heard your introduction. Morgan, we are on to this item of the agenda. Please give your introduction to the nominee whenever you're ready.
And Morgan, you're muted. Oh, you know you're muted. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, it looks like you're not muted anymore. Should we potentially move to a different agenda item to give IT an opportunity to work with Morgan to resolve this audio difficulty issue? Alternatively, Morgan, if you're willing to waive the presentation, I could give the mic to the nominee and the committee could ask questions. But why am I asking? These are rhetorical questions if you can't respond to me. So here's what I think we should do to be most efficient with our time. Can we move on to Agenda Item Two and come back to this once Morgan is able to present? So that's why I'm just going to use Chair's prerogative here to do that. So will the clerk please read Item Two into the record?
Agenda Item Two, Clerk File 314499. Council waiver or modification of certain development standards to allow redevelopment of the South Park Community Center and to allow five light poles for athletic field lights, project number 3034063 LU Type 5.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So as alluded to in my Chair's report, this is one of our items that involves a public hearing. So before we consider this legislation, we need to have a public hearing. As Presiding Officer, I am now opening the public hearing on Clerk File 314499 relating to current use taxation. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers signed up for this public hearing.
Okay. And given that there's no speakers, I'm going to close the speaking portion of the public hearing. We are joined by Council Central staff. So Kittle, are you here for this item?
Yes, I am here for this item.
Okay, why don't I hand it over to you, given that we do not have a public comment portion of this hearing, given that no one has come to weigh in? So why don't you give an overview to the committee, Kittle, and then we can ask any follow-up questions that we might have?
Sure, and I think we should have probably online folks from the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections and also from the Parks Department as well. They'll be giving the bulk of this presentation. Maybe I can just sort of start by orienting the committee to sort of what's in your notebook and describe the type of action here. It's actually similar to the type of action under Agenda Item Three. I think your script may have been a little bit outdated. This is actually not current use taxation. These are what are called Type 5 decisions that the council makes about city facilities. These are somewhat rare, maybe not that rare. They're an infrequent decision that the council makes. Specifically, they are decisions about granting waivers from development standards that would otherwise be applicable to city facilities. You get about one every year, maybe one every year and a half. A typical city facility seeking a waiver of development standards from the council is a fire station in a park. We have two of them here today. The first one is Parks. Usually, these facilities are located in less intense residential zones, which have more restrictive development standards. Typically, there is some functional aspect to the city facility, like a fire station that makes it such that they can't meet development standards. In the case of Parks, it's often something like the height of field light poles, which typically exceed the height of the zone but are necessary to mitigate spill-over effects from field lighting. The first agenda item here that is a Type 5 decision is a council waiver modification of development standards for field lighting at the South Park Community Center. You have a memo from me, which has proposed findings, conclusions, and decision on that application by the Parks Department. The findings, conclusion, and decision would grant the waivers and impose any conditions recommended by SDCI here, there, and on. So that's all I have in the way of introduction. If Carly Guillory is online from SDCI, she can walk through the presentation.
So actually, Kittle, thank you. Before we go into that, yes, the script did erroneously say current use taxation and not Type 5 decision. So I do want to correct that for the record. I do want to just confirm that the clerk file is correct in the script as well for the purpose of making a record for the public hearing.
Yes, it is correct. It's 314499.
Thank you. And with that, I do want to hand it over to our Parks panel, and thanks, Kittle, for that introduction. So Parks is joining us online. Take it away. And do introductions before beginning the presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Carly Guillory, and I'm a planner with the Department of Construction and Inspections. And so I'm prepared to provide a bit of a presentation for the committee this afternoon on the South Park proposal. And, Kittle, thank you for the introduction. The staff memo that you have in your packet today is extremely thorough and accurate. And so my presentation will essentially follow that same format. Let's move to the first slide, please. So just real quickly, just the purpose and values of our department are something I'd like to share with you. You know, our purpose is helping people build a safe, livable, and inclusive Seattle using these values of equity, respect, quality, integrity, and service. All right, thank you. So next slide. All right, so just as outlined in your memo from council staff, as well as in our director's report to the council, sort of the scope and purpose today, which Kittle described. We've got a land use action, council land use action, that the land use code allows authority for the council to make a waiver or modification to a development standard for a city facility. So in this case, we have a proposal from Seattle's Parks and Rec. They're proposing some renovations to an existing city facility, the South Park Community Center site. And they're asking that we waive the maximum height standard for the zone for four new athletic field light poles. The light poles exceed the height, and the council has the authority to grant that waiver. And the director from SDCI has reviewed the proposal and does recommend approval with no conditions. So, next slide, please. So just real briefly, I'd like to introduce you to the location of the site, talk a bit more specifically about the proposal, and then I'll run through some of the things the director looked at when evaluating the request. Next slide, please. So the site is in the South Park neighborhood. It's about a five-and-a-half-acre existing facility, existing park with community center. And it's bordered by State Route 99 at the west, Eighth Avenue South on the east, South Sullivan Street to the south. And then to the north, there's a narrow public right-of-way. And then beyond that are some residential lots. Next slide, please. So I wanted to share the zoning map because it's helpful to understand the context a little bit here. The site is in a neighborhood residential zone. So we've got a maximum height limit of 30 feet. But adjacent to the site, to the west, you see a little bit of industrial zoning, which has a higher or a greater allowance for height at 45 feet. And then a little bit of brown, which is a multifamily zone, allowing apartments to build up to 50 feet. So it's helpful to understand that while the site is within a neighborhood residential zone with this, you know, pretty strict height requirement, there are some adjacent uses that are higher in intensity and higher in height as well. Next slide, please. All right, so for the proposal, like I mentioned before, it's for four new athletic field light poles. They're 70 feet in height. And the section drawing on the left of this slide gives us an idea of what those poles might feel like in relation to the existing community center building on site. So the existing building on site is probably about 30 feet in height. The poles will be 70 feet. And then on the map, on the right there, you can see there are four little gold diamonds. Those are the approximate location of the new light pole. So there's two on the north end and two on the south end of the new athletic field. And what I wanted to do in conclusion was to share a little bit about some of the things that the director of SDCI looked at when evaluating the proposal. The code requires that we prepare a report with our recommendation to council, and you have that in your packet. And you'll see that the four elements that we looked at were comments from other city agencies and departments, public comments. We received about 10 public comments and provided a written response to those comments. So beginning on page five of that director's report is where you can find the summary of that section. And then we also looked at how the proposal complies with city regulations, standards, and policies. And then lastly, we took a look and evaluated all of the environmental documentation that was created by Seattle Parks and Rec and had an opportunity to look at things like their environmental CIPA determination, their lighting plan, geotechnical reports, ARBIS reports, and other reports of that nature. So in conclusion, the SDCI director recommends council approve the request for the four new light poles at 70 feet in height, and we recommend no conditions. And so that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I want to give the first opportunity because we do on this committee have the District One council member. If Councilmember Herbold has any questions, given that this is a project in South Park in District One, I'd like to give some space to her initially.
That's very kind. Appreciate that. Also, I'm excited that, although this is something that would normally go through the Land Use Committee, which I do not serve on, I have the opportunity to vote on this at the committee level because it's in the Public Assets Committee. So there's that. Mostly, I'm really wanting to understand how it is that we can both approve this without conditions while also confirming that we are addressing the concerns heard by SDCI in public comment, specifically the concerns around spill-over light and glare, traffic, hours of operation. And I trust that there is a commitment to addressing those areas. But how do we both fulfill that commitment while also not having any conditions for this approval? And that question is asked full well, understanding how much support there is in South Park for the field improvements and how important outdoor space is for public health in communities like South Park that suffer disproportionate health outcomes. Thank you.
I can take a crack at that, Carly. You may have some things to add here. This is, it's often the case that when SDCI is reviewing a proposal by another city department, that other city department acts as the lead agency. So here, it's the case that the Parks Department acted as the CIPA lead agency and likely incorporated conditions into the siding and landscape siding and planning for the project generally. SDCI's review was based on the CIPA review that was done by the Parks Department, but was limited in scope to just the decision in front of SDCI, which was the light pole decision. I don't know if I got that exactly right, Carly, but that's my recollection of how this process generally works.
Yeah, I think that's a great summary. And I would add also that, you know, a lot of the regulations and codes that we already have in our land use code, for example, or our stormwater code, or our noise ordinance, you know, we feel that those are sufficient to mitigate some of the potential environmental impacts. And so that's why we, as a department, didn't recommend any conditions.
I can continue to play the Parks Capitol Coordinator if you want, although it's not really my role here. But generally speaking, sort of in the past, I know this, I think this is the case here, and it has been the past with other field lighting decisions. It's actually the height of the light poles themselves that work as a mitigating factor. If they are tall enough, it's easier to have directional lighting that is really just lighting the plate-filled surface, and there's less opportunity for spill-over effect. When the light poles are lower, the angle of the lighting is often such that there may be sort of spill-over effects on the neighboring properties or, you know, whatever the adjacent land uses are. So it's sort of a little bit of a conundrum in some ways that, you know, it sounds, on the one hand, the decision here is that the council is allowing something to exceed the height. But by virtue of exceeding the height, the spill-over effects from the field lighting are actually less on the adjacent properties.
Yeah, it's been very helpful. Appreciate that.
Okay, are there any questions from the rest of the committee on this item? Okay, I don't see any additional questions. Can I ask two just a clarifying question of the clerk? For the purpose of the public hearing, is there any additional record that has to be made around suspension of the rules?
You will need to suspend the rules to vote on the same day that the public hearing is held.
Yes, good, excellent. That's what I thought. I think that motion would be in order at this time if there's no additional questions in the public hearing and no more public comment. So at this point, I would ask from council colleagues if there is any objection to suspending the council rules to allow the committee to vote on this legislation on the same day as the public hearing that we've just concluded. Is there any objection? I don't see or hear any objection. So hearing no objection, the council rule is suspended, and the committee will proceed with voting on this bill. I would like to move Clerk File 314499. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the clerk file?
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Council President Juarez.
Aye.
Councilmember Mosqueta.
Aye.
Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Chair, there are four in favor and none opposed.
All right, the clerk file passes, and the rules, having been suspended, will be considered at the next full council meeting. So, thank you. Have we resolved the challenges with Morgan Littlefield's mic for Item One at this point?
Morgan Littlefield left the meeting and has rejoined the meeting. We have not had an opportunity to test her mic yet.
Why don't we go ahead and do that?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hey, perfect. Okay, will the clerk please read Item One back into the record?
Appointment 02580. Appointment of Ashraf Hasham as member Climate Pledge Arena Giving Council for a term to June 30th, 2026.
Thank you. So we are now joined by Morgan Littlefield, along with our appointee. And I will hand the mic over to Morgan to introduce our appointee, and we will then ask questions.
Thank you very much, and my apologies for the loss of time and disruption with my audio challenges. Happy to be here and to invite Ashraf Hasham to join the Giving Council to share a little bit of history on the Giving Council. Climate Pledge Arena is dedicated to supporting our community. One of the ways envisioned early in our relationship with the city of Seattle and formalized in the arena lease agreement is the establishment of a community fund to be distributed by a Giving Council, of which Ashraf would be a member. The community fund shall be distributed in furtherance of Climate Pledge Arena, the Seattle Kraken, and One Roof Foundation's shared commitment to fostering an equitable and inclusive community and in alignment with the city's race and social justice initiative. It shall support youth-focused programs and projects that use arts, music, and culture as strategies to drive racial equity and social justice. Grants will be awarded on an annual basis and will not exceed $10,000. At least 75% of the fund will be directed to organizations within the Seattle Center neighborhood, including Seattle Center Campus, Uptown, Queen Anne, Southlake Union, and Belltown. And this is the council that we would like Ashraf to join. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the great introduction. Ashraf, hand it over to you, and then we'll ask you some questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Thank you, Morgan. Good to be here. I'm super honored for this opportunity and to be considered to be able to give back to the community in this very specific and very special way. I served as the Executive Director of the Vera Project and worked with Morgan and the Climate Pledge Arena folks before and during the building of the arena. And to be able to actualize some of those commitments from the lease agreement negotiations is very much a treat. Did not expect this opportunity. So very, very honored and humbled. I'm happy to take any questions.
So, Ashraf, given your background on the Seattle Center campus and everything that that campus holds in terms of the arts and cultural mission of the city, how does that guide your approach to this and in your vision for this collaboration with the Giving Council and how we can enhance and build on that legacy? And given your work with the Vera Project, how does this relate to expanding access to arts, in particular to young people in our community?
Thank you so much for that question. I do think that an amazing opportunity to continue supporting our arts and cultural ecosystem, specifically around the Seattle Center Campus, extending, of course, to Belltown and Southlake Union and those adjoining neighborhoods, is a huge opportunity here. And youth organizations, in addition to that, I came here to the city of Seattle's Office of Arts and Culture to work on the grant-making programs for youth programs and for arts programs and youth arts programs together. So I do feel I have a understanding of some of those resources of community and those that are just popping up as well. Excited to be able to share that, as long with the best practices of grant-making with this council and this committee.
Thank you. This really is a great example of the continued collaboration with Climate Pledge and all of the work that is derivative of having that great new asset on the Seattle Center Campus in a really exciting way to continue that partnership of having this committee be involved in selecting representation on the Giving Council. So really a great opportunity for everybody. Are there other questions from committee members? I don't see any. Morgan, do you have anything to add before we vote?
I do not, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I say all the time that, you know, my favorite thing about this committee is these enduring civic partnerships and the city building that we do as a result. And this is a great example of that. So thank you, Morgan, for your leadership. And Ashraf, thank you so much for stepping up to take this on. So with that, I am going to go ahead and and move the recommendation of the appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on confirming the appointment 02580?
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Council President Juarez.
Aye.
Councilmember Mosqueta.
Aye.
Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Chair, there are four in favor and none opposed.
Okay, the appointment passes, and this will go to the June 27th full council meeting. And Ashraf, you do not need to attend in person, but you were more than welcome to. It'd be great to see you there if you want to come by, but it is not required. And we will hopefully confirm you at that time. So thank you so much. Okay, will the clerk please read Item Three into the record?
Clerk File 314494. Council Concept Approval and Waiver or Modification of Development Standards for Replacement to Fire Station 31 at 11302 Meridian Avenue North, project number 3038025 LU Type 5.
Thank you so much. And, Kittle, is it you again on this one for Central Staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Again.
Great. Excellent. So before we dive into this, and thanks, everyone, for joining at table in chambers, we again need to open a public hearing. So as Presiding Officer, I'm now opening the public hearing on Clerk File 314494 relating to a Type 5 decision. Are there any speakers, Mr. Clerk, who have signed up to comment in this public hearing on the clerk file?
There are no speakers who have signed up to comment in this public hearing.
Okay, given that there are no speakers, we will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And we have a panel joining us. So how should we start the presentation? Who wants to go first and introduce the panel?
Why don't you just start? Go down the line, Andy.
I'll start with introductions. So Andy Ishizaki, I'm with Finance and Administrative Services, Capital Development. I'm the Senior Project Manager for the project.
Good afternoon. Battalion Chief Dan Murray, Operations Battalion Chief here in Seattle Fire Department. I was also the previous station captain of Fire Station 31.
Good afternoon. Zubin Rao, I'm with Miller-Hull. We're the architects on the project.
Kittle Freeman, Council Central Staff.
And I'm Holly Goddard, land use planner.
Oh, great. Okay, thanks, Holly. Sorry, didn't see you there, joining virtually. Thank you so much. Good to see you here. Okay, well, it looks like the presentation is up. So why doesn't the panel just go ahead and proceed? And we'll jump in with questions afterward.
Thank you. My name is Holly Goddard, and I'll kick it off today. And thank you, council. Thank you for your time and attention. My name is Holly Goddard. I'm a land use planner at SDCI, assigned to the project. And as you know, the design team is here at the table, and they'll be helping present today. The project before you is a fire station, number 31, replacement. This project has had successful This project has had successful outcomes, and you'll hear more about this from our public outreach, the design commission and the SEPA determination. So today, with this agenda, we'll through a little bit of project background, neighborhood contacts, building design and development departures. This is a framework that is just like what Kittle explained earlier when Carly brought her project. So this is a public facility that is sited in a zone, which is a multifamily zone. And today, we are here to ask for a waiver for some development standards that just don't work for a fire station typology. As you know, the land use code does not have standards specific to fire stations. So being located in a multifamily low-rise zone, we have to work with those development standards of that zone. The low-rise zone contemplates building typologies such as townhouses and apartment blocks. And that doesn't work well for a fire station. So we are here to ask for four waivers of development standards. And I just wanna point to the center portion of this colorful slide. It says the council may waive or grant departures if the following criteria satisfy. So you see number one, does the facility address public service needs? And we want to show that to you today. And number two, does the impact of the facility on surrounding properties, has that been addressed in the design of the building, siting, landscaping, screening? And we want to show that to you as well. Next slide, please. These are the four development standards, excuse me, that we will be looking at today and that we're looking for, uh, council to waive. Number one is subside setbacks at the north edge of the property. Number two, side setbacks at the south edge of the property. Number three are bulkheads retaining walls, excuse me. And number four is removing some exceptional trees. I'll let the design team explain the project now, and we hope you'll be able to waive these four development standards after hearing more about this excellent project. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Holly. Um, so, uh, yeah, just to summarize a little bit about, uh, our engagement with Design Commission. Uh, we had a lot of great thoughtful discussions on, uh, the project's contribution to the public realm, uh, relationship to neighbors, uh, strategy for tree replacement and so on. Um, we did, uh, pass unanimously through all three of the major milestones, uh, required by Design Commission. Um, Andy's gonna speak a little bit to our public engagement. Next slide, please.
So we reached out to the community in, uh, multiple ways, uh, to disseminate information, solicit feedback. And one of the most effective ways of communication were one-to-one personal meetings with each of the neighbors, uh, each of the immediate neighbors that are directly impacted. Uh, they're very supportive of the project. Uh, some of them did, uh, express concerns about, uh, noise in general and parking, but we've addressed that, uh, through the thoughtful design. Next slide, please. Oh, next slide.
Uh, this slide here demonstrates our, uh, response area up in Fire Station Thirty-One's district. And, uh, the new location is operationally ideal, uh, for us. It supports our service delivery and deployment model, which is focused on our access throughout the district. Uh, from this new location, we're able to, uh, get access to, uh, some of the major thoroughfares and, uh, routes of travel like I-5, North Gateway, Meridian, Aurora and other major thoroughfares. And what it does is it allows us to ensure that we can still work to meet our NFPA standards for response times, uh, when we're responding to fire and emergencies. The other area, uh, that this station location supports is that it's, uh, it complements the other stations that surround, uh, Fire Station thirty-one. Uh, there is a, uh, if you take a look at the map, you can see that roughly there's a, uh, uh, equidistant between Fire Station thirty-one and the surrounding stations. And what's important for us is that we wanna ensure that we can, uh, ensure that the public need within the district is taken care of. But we also equally wanna make sure that we support the surrounding stations and neighborhoods around us. We believe this, uh, station location does that.
Uh, okay, next, please. Uh, so just quickly to orient everybody, um, we are, you know, quite close to the existing, uh, temporary station. Uh, North Gate is, of course, a very busy and growing neighborhood with lots of, uh, major institutions and, uh, shopping centers and so forth. Uh, next, please. Uh, these photos were all taken within, uh, just a couple of blocks of the site. So you can see there's a, uh, quite a variety of, uh, building typologies and uses. So, everything from single-family to townhomes, multifamily and commercial uses. Uh, next slide. And then zooming into the site, that large image, uh, is basically taken at the corner of the site. Um, the, the land, uh, the lot is currently vacant. Um, and, uh, you know, there are currently no, uh, there's no sidewalk infrastructure or, um, other street improvements on North Hundred and Thirteenth Street. Um, and there have been some issues with, um, abandoned vehicles and fires in the area. Uh, next, please. Um, so now we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about the sighting of this facility and the design. Um, so, uh, just for reference, we've kind of shown that this is, uh, you know, kind of situated in a low-rise zone. And, uh, you can see our site is kind of long and narrow and surrounded by single-family homes to the north, townhomes to the east, uh, mul-, you know, multifamily, uh, apartment buildings to the south and, uh, large cemetery to the west. Uh, next, please. Uh, this diagram just really explains, um, kind of why the site and building are designed the way they are. So, uh, from the beginning of the project, the Fire Department, you know, emphasized that they need four apparatus bays that all have active response vehicles, uh, and they all have to respond to the arterial road. So that basically positions the apparatus bay on the site, and then the rest of the building and site have to kind of be designed around that traffic flow. So cars will come in, you know, uh, rigs will return on North Hundred and Thirteenth Street and then respond out to Meridian. Uh, next, please. Uh, so this is just an image of the site plan. Um, as you can see, we're providing, um, a large number of new trees. Uh, the building will feature extensive green roof areas, um, extensive photovoltaic array on the roof. Um, and as I was mentioning, currently North Hundred and Thirteenth, uh, has no street improvements. So we'll be installing, um, new curb and gutter, uh, new street trees, new sidewalk, um, and greatly kind of enhancing accessibility and safety in that area. Uh, next, please. Uh, so just to quickly, uh, review the floor plans here, um, this is level one. So again, you can kind of see apparatus bay, you know, kind of sets the rest of the building design. Uh, we've highlighted the departure areas in gold. So those are, uh, the kind of small areas of the building that, uh, you know, uh, intrude into the setbacks. Um, so you can kind of see how those operational spaces are, um, absolutely necessary to have adjacent to the apparatus base. Uh, we also have a, uh, combined kind of, uh, fire training, uh, classroom and meeting room on level one that will be available for use by community groups. Uh, next, please. Uh, level two features, uh, officers' quarters and the crew office. Next. And level three is where the bulk of the, uh, living, physical training and, uh, eating spaces are for, uh, for the crews. Next. Uh, we do have a small basement, which is, uh, basically just entirely building services and one small, uh, operational storage room. Next. So we've included, included a few renderings to, um, kind of give you an idea of the look and feel of the facility. Um, from the very beginning, we've designed the facility to really tuck seamlessly into this residential neighborhood. So, chosen a palette of, uh, kind of warm residential scaled materials and included this, uh, very large integrated public art mural, um, which will just be, we think, really fantastic for the pedestrian experience. Um, you can also start to see the street improvements I've mentioned there. Um, next slide, please. Uh, this is kind of if you're coming from the north on Meridian and you see this, uh, side of the station. Um, again, you can kind of see just how nicely it tucks into the existing grade and kind of really fits the scale of the neighborhood. Next, please. And, um, this is sort of what you would see as you're walking up from the corner to the front door. So we have, uh, kind of a scissoring sidewalk configuration here with an accessible path both up to the main entrance of the fire station as well as, uh, down the street. Um, we also have, uh, we, you know, we spent a lot of time working with Design Commission on, uh, kind of creating a little public, kind of mini plaza and seating area at the corner. Um, so we think this'll just be a huge, um, huge positive for the neighborhood. Next, please. And, uh, this just gives you a sense of the overall, um, length of the building, um, and kind of the scale of that public art mural. Um, we've also kind of broken up that retaining wall that you see in the foreground, um, with, um, special materials at the entryway to kind of soften that experience and, um, just make that a really nice place to be. Uh, next, please. And then this, uh, view just, uh, hopefully helps you understand, uh, kind of the sighting of the station a little bit better. Um, the yellow line kind of shows how the larger apparatuses will be able to pull in off that side street, uh, go up the ramp and, uh, kind of back, get into the back of the station. Um, uh, next. And, uh, these are just some, uh, example photos of what these materials look like in real life that have been, uh, done on other fire stations in the region. Um, so we just think it's gonna have a really warm civic presence, um, with a lot of transparency, um, and just fit, fit really well into this neighborhood. Next, please. Uh, our public artist is, uh, Damon Brown. His state studio is called Creative Lou. Um, he spent a lot of time with the Fire Department and in the neighborhood to, uh, come up with this composition, which is, uh, sort of representative of the energy of this, uh, station. It's one of the busiest in the city, um, and kind of drawing from themes about the fire service and, uh, local landmarks. Next, please. Um, so now we have slides at the end here, which will just, uh, explain in detail the departures we're seeking. Next. Um, so the first one is the setback on the north side. Uh, you can see the gold area is, uh, the area of level one that is not conforming. And there's that very small portion that's orange, which is, uh, levels two and three, which is a, a stepped setback that's based on building depth. Um, those spaces are absolutely critical to the operation of the Fire Department. Uh, as we remember in that level one floor plan, the gold area is where all the operational and storage support spaces are. Um, there's really no other place to put them on site. Um, the way we're kind of mitigating these features is, uh, we have extensive green roof on that level one portion. Um, and if you go to the next slide, uh, this is a section through the building. Um, so you can see how that non-conforming portion of level one is essentially the same height as the existing rear yard fences of those houses. So the new non-conforming area proposed is, uh, basically no, no taller than the existing rear yard fences. So it's kind of nestled into a grade and about, uh, six feet high. Uh, next, please. Uh, so then there's also a small sliver of the building at the southeast portion that intrudes into that stepped setback. Um, if we go to the next slide, um, you can see that there's been a lot of care placed in this area. So we have the main entry in this zone, um, with a lot of, uh, transparency and a two-story curtain wall expression. We also have the kind of special screening material that I mentioned earlier, as well as, uh, bioswale in that zone. Um, next, please. Uh, the third departure requested is the height of retaining walls in the setback. Uh, so they are limited to six feet. So we have a small sliver of the wall that, um, exceeds that. Um, again, uh, we're kind of mitigating that by, uh, having the pedestrian access stair at the east, which really activates that highest portion of the wall. Uh, we do have the bioswale located in that area as well. Um, and, um, again, uh, just kind of breaking up the length of that wall with, um, the kind of special screening material. Next, please. And the last departure requesting is, uh, removal of three exceptional trees. Uh, the one, uh, noted at the north end of the site is, uh, basically in permanent decline. That one is, uh, almost dead currently, so probably wouldn't be, uh, covered by the land use code. But, um, the remaining, uh, two, uh, we need to remove because of, you can see the, um, the footprint of the facility just does not allow for the saving of these trees. So, um, we are mitigating this by increasing the total number of trees on site from current of twenty-one to a new of twenty-eight. We're increasing the canopy of maturity by forty-eight percent. And we're really locating, um, the new trees where they'll be of most benefit to both the neighbors and the public. So basically at the perimeter of the property. Um, next, please. So you can, um, see that there. Um, and also kind of as mentioned at the beginning, uh, we are providing extensive green roof areas and bioswales, which will also help replace some of the ecosystem services provided by those trees. Um, so that basically concludes the presentation. We have, um, a site plan and the departures here again on slides at the end for reference, um, if there are questions. But, uh, thank you very much for your consideration.
Uh, one, one thing I'd like to add about the exceptional trees, if you could, uh, go back a few slides that shows, uh, the trees that are slated for removal. Well, one more, one more, but, uh, yeah, that, oh, that one. Uh, so the two trees that you see on the southwestern corner, the two on the lower left-hand side that are grouped together, uh, there are contaminated soils on the site that we'll need to remove. And when we do remove the contaminated soils, it will impact the critical root zones of one and possibly two of those trees. So when we do, uh, go through the, uh, remediation process of the soils, uh, the, the trees will likely, uh, be impacted. Uh, it will likely need removal anyways. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, well, um, I feel very fortunate, uh, to be chairing the committee that this project is to come to, uh, for these deliberations as, as I am not, uh, uh, public safety or land use. I'm not completely sure why, uh, it's in front of my committee, but it's been really great to dive it, to dive into this, uh, nor do I represent District Five.
Yeah. I'm just chomping at the bit, Chair.
Yes, yes. And, and so, uh, similarly to, to the previous public hearing, I, I do wanna give the first opportunity to Council President, um, if she has any questions or comments on the project. Um, and then I, I have some as well. Um, but Council President, if you, since this is a District Five, um, asset, if you, uh, have any questions or comments, I wanna turn the mic over to you first.
Thank you, Council Pres-, I mean, thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, this is something that we've been working on, I think, since two thousand sixteen. Um, and again, I don't know how it ended up in your committee, but I'm glad it did. Um, working closely with Chief Skogans, Kenny Stewart, Fire Station Thirty-One leadership, addressing the health issues, um, with Dan Murphy and those folks. Um, and I should say that we also, our office met with the community, as well as, as your presenter shared, uh, not only just community, but the social service organizations that are in that neighborhood and Northwest Hospital, which was really key and heard nothing but great things back. Um, I should add that, um, I really wanna thank CL Fire Department and, um, their activities up in, well, citywide, but particularly in D-five on Lake City and Aurora and the recent fires that we've had. And of course, um, we work closely with the fire station, and you guys will have to correct me. I don't know the fire station number for the one that's on Lake City. But it looks like you're, um, the, um, organization, or I'm sorry, the architects here, is it Miller and Hull? The gentleman speaking, 'cause like, being on, on, not there, I can't, I didn't get to see your actual names. I was trying to look for them.
That's correct, Miller Hull, yes.
Are you, are you Mr. Rao? Are you Zubin?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, good. That's what I thought. I just didn't wanna make a, so, I'm really glad that, um, to see the renderings because they look a lot like the Fire Station on Lake City way that just tucks right into the neighborhood with the broad sidewalk and the art. Um, it just, it looks wonderful. I really wanna thank you for that. Um, and also working with, um, thanking SDCI and FAS and the Design Commission because we knew that this station and then the temporary station they were in, that it was an emergency situation that had to be addressed immediately. And also thank this city council and the prior city council for passing, um, the budget, um, to address this and move this. And thank Councilwoman Herbold because she was involved behind the scenes as well with CL Fire Department and Labor and, um, Mr. Stewart to make sure that this happened, as well as Chief Skogans. So it makes me happy to see that after years of doing all this stuff, that it's actually gonna happen. So I just wanna thank you so much for the work that you did. The fire station looks beautiful. And again, um, I just, and this is just a little side note, there is a huge fire, I think, two years ago, and I just happened to be at the stoplight on North Gateway and Meridian where that huge apartment building burnt down. And I just happened to be at the light, and the fire stations were there within like a minute, not even two minutes. And I remember calling the Chief Skogans and saying, "Well done. You have no idea how amazing that is." So, um, I just wanted to thank the folks that have designed this. It fits into the neighborhood and all the people that have been working on this, at least since I've been on Seattle City Council. So, thank you.
And, uh, Councilmember Herbold, as Public Safety Chair, do you have any, uh, questions or comments for the hearing?
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, Council President Juarez, for, um, acknowledging, um, the legacy around the prior Station Thirty-One. I think it's really important for us. the legacy around the prior Station 31. I think it's really important for us to remember as we prioritize addressing health conditions at our fire stations. But not only the health conditions, but also the living conditions because our firefighters are, are staying where they work for long periods of time overnight. And when I have visited fire stations in the past, I'm amazed at the fact that the accommodations are so modest and, to be frank, in some cases undersized for the level of service that we expect from Seattle's bravest. So, you know, most recently with Councilmember Muscata, we saw if, when we toured Stations 37 and 26, that our firefighters were actually converting storage closets to sleeping quarters. And so I'm really pleased that we are building a fire station for the future where every square foot counts and that its location is driven by decisions about best response time. It's, as again, Council President Orez attested to, it's critical that location decisions are driven by what is, what makes it most possible for lifesavers to respond quickly. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbold. Similarly, just to digress for a moment on this, I had the great privilege of spending some time with the firefighters of Fire Station 20 in the Interbay neighborhood in my district to observe on the evening of the memorial observances last month. The fire truck lit up outside in remembrance of firefighters who have fallen in the line of duty and had the opportunity afterwards to take a tour of Fire Station 20, which is one of our more modern stations in the, in the system. And part of that tour and part of those conversations with the firefighters at Station 20 involved conversations around the unfavorable comparison of the previous facility on that site of some of the facilities that are within the system that have the issues that you just indicated around conversions of spaces for staying, you know, and sleeping on duty that were not designed for that purpose and the amount of discomfort and and that the unsatisfactory conditions that our firefighters have to experience in many cases as part of their service and part of the line of duty is something we need to continue to work on. And the project in front of us in this hearing is, is a step towards mitigating that for the particular area that Station 31 services. I think I'll, I don't have any additional questions for the, from the presentation. I just want to put, but reemphasize some things on the record since we are being asked here today to essentially make special accommodation and waiver to accommodate the project. And just for the thoroughness of our, of our record, a couple of things that stand out. First, for me, the standard that we're supposed to meet in conferring this to establish that there's service needs and to establish that effort has been made to mitigate potential impacts. I would say, based on the presentation and the materials that have been provided, that both of those conditions in the circumstance have been met. I mean, there's a clearly established service need that we've discussed and that firefighter Murray put on the record to fill a gap that is between several equitistant stations that an area that will not be served unless this station in the middle is, is operational and fully prepared to take on a certain amount of duties. Clearly, for that service need, the station needs to be of a certain size and design that will be able to provide the service required for the service area that requires a full service bay. And the result of the need for that service bay necessitates certain waivers from what the standard land use requirements would be to accommodate other amenities that are necessary for the operation of the station. Presentation made reference to the need for certain setbacks and certain other accommodations to make sure that adequate living area and operations facilities that support that bay and the number of vehicles required to be stored in that bay to provide satisfactory service. And that without those amenities, the station could not be operational or suitable for the habitation of the firefighters who perform this service. There was also a presentation regarding the tree canopy and the necessity to remove certain exceptional trees from the site in order to facilitate a site of the necessary bulk to accommodate all of the needs. That is being mitigated by a 48% increase in the tree canopy on the site. So for those reasons, I, I determine for myself as a council member that the conditions are met that would warrant a type five decision being granted by the council. And applaud the diligence of the team that is in chambers and giving the presentation today for their work to balance several competing needs to keep the people of the city safe. But also to accommodate the concerns that were heard through an extensive outreach process of community and the neighbors to produce a, a facility that integrates well into the surrounding neighborhood and and even contributes a significant public art component. So for those reasons, I'll be voting for this today. And I think this is a very productive hearing. I'm very, I feel very fortunate to have been in a position to play host to this, this project and, and accept this presentation in my committee. And with that, I will do one more call to colleagues if there's any questions or comments. Councilmember Herbold.
My apologies. I meant to ask this question earlier and don't want to interrupt the important flow of statements for, for the public record, which as you, as you say, Mr. Chair, are necessary and, and critical to acknowledge. I did have one question regarding some of the inquiries in the process. And if you did already answer this, I apologize. I'm, I'm happy to a question offline if, if it was answered and I just missed the issue. But I, I remember seeing reference to the Duamish concern that this may be a culturally significant area with a high probability to have unknown archaeological deposits. And just wonder if you could speak a little bit about what it means to have and what I, I might not say is called an inadvertent discovery plan and what, what that means.
I can speak briefly to that. Is that correct, Kiel?
Sure, go ahead, Holly.
Thanks. I'm sorry, everyone. My video is on the blink. We have to this, we did a SEPA review with this project as, as STCI SEPA review. And we put in, the reference you may have seen is conditioning to address the, the, the comment from the Duamish. And the inadvertent discovery plan requires the owner and the contractor to educate contractors who come onto the property on what to do if they see something questionable. If this at the last page of the decision, page 13 and 14, it describes that a bit. And so that is what the inadvertent discovery plan does. It does not require that an archaeologist be on site. But it does require care and stopping work and, and, and regrouping as a, as part of the plan. That's what that is. Great. And, and so I maybe Kiel, you can help us. I have in the decision, it's recommended conditions none for council land use action and recommended conditions for SEPA. Do you have a couple of those, a couple of conditions?
Sure. So the council decision incorporates STCI's recommended SEPA condition. There's not a condition recommended from STCI related to the waivers per se. But there is this SEPA condition that responds to a concern by the Duamish tribe, and that's reflected in the council's decisions. Essentially the same condition recommended by STCI.
Okay, are there any further questions from council members? I don't see any. So I will go ahead and move forward with the, the same request from the previous item asking if there is objection that the council rules be suspended to allow the committee to vote on this bill the same day the public hearing was held. Hearing no opposition or objection, I'm going to go ahead and say that the council rule is suspended. And the committee will proceed with voting on the bill. So I'd like to move Clerk File 314494. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Council President Juarez.
Aye.
Councilmember Muscata.
Aye.
Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Chair, there are four in favor and unopposed.
Excellent. The clerk file passes and we'll go to the next full council meeting. Thank you, everybody, for joining us today and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read item four into the record?
Council Bill 120590, An Ordinance Relating to the Waterfront Park and Public Spaces Authorizing the Superintendent of Parks and Recreation and the Director of the Seattle Center to execute for and on behalf of the City of Seattle in agreement with Friends of Waterfront Seattle for operation and maintenance of waterfront park and public spaces and ratifying and confirming certain acts.
Thank you so much. We are back on this item that regular viewers of the committee will be familiar with from the last couple of meetings. And we are joined by a distinguished panel from the Office of the Waterfront, Seattle Center and Friends of the Waterfront. So why don't we, as well, I should say, a substitution from Council Central Staff who is now in the chamber. So why don't we go ahead and have the panel introduce themselves, starting with Director Foster?
Hi, everyone. Marshall Foster, interim director at Seattle Center. And I'll hand it to Tiffany.
Hello, Tiffany Malacay. I am the Waterfront Operations Manager at CL Center. I will hand it to Eldon.
Hello, I'm Eldon Tam. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Friends of Waterfront Seattle. Apologies that Joy is unable to join us at this time. I'll hand it over to Sista.
Hi, I'm Eric McConaughey. I'm the Council Central Staff to cover waterfront issues.
Excellent. Okay, well, is there a, a formal presentation or is this just a, an update from, from the panel? How do you want to proceed, Director Foster?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Lewis and committee members. We, we were with you last, at your last meeting, as well as in May, where we were able to, I think, walk through the agreement in detail. And we appreciated some of the questions we got through the committee discussions. We were able to follow up on those. One important update that I'm pleased to share is that, and Eldon, please feel free to, to, to go further. Friends of Waterfront Seattle and MLK Labor Council did reach agreement on a labor harmony agreement for the waterfront management agreement, which is now in place between them, which I know was a particular question that the committee had had. So at this time, we feel the legislation is, is there and, and ready for your consideration.
Yeah, I'll just add on with the labor harmony portion, which is we had some fruitful negotiations and discussions and we reached a place where I think is very supportive to everyone's position and point of view. And to say the discussions are very constructive and I think everyone really heard the various priorities and really came together to really be supportive to the greater needs of the project of the waterfront and of labor. So appreciate our partners over there. And I think we ended in a good spot.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I don't really know what else there is to do in this hearing. I mean, that's sort of been a subtext of our last couple of check-ins was continuing to work on ironing out challenges related to an equitable labor harmony agreement. I've been very encouraged to receive confirmation. Not just from the panel here today, but also from leadership at the King County Labor Council indicating that that those negotiations were resolved on, on terms equitable to, to all parties. And just really want to salute the leadership of everyone involved to come together and resolve that leading to a, a, a brief and harmonious, appropriately harmonious meeting this afternoon. So I don't know if there's anything from central staff to, to weigh in on here before we, we open it up to council colleagues.
Just, just to briefly outline that the bill would adopt the findings of the Central Waterfront Oversight Committee, determine that Friends has met the qualifications necessary to be the operating partner. It would also authorize the Park Superintendent and Director Foster to sign on the study's behalf for this agreement with the Friends of the Waterfront. And it would ratify and confirm acts consistent with the authority of the ordinance taken after its passage, but prior to its effective date. Those are the bare bones of the ordinance. It's helpful sometimes when we've had a few meetings just to return and touch base with those.
Yeah, thank you so much for that review. And, and just for the record again, this is our third, I believe this is our third hearing on this matter, on this legend, at least the concept of this legislation. And the previous two meetings did involve fairly comprehensive presentations that are, that are part of the body of record on, on this topic. So with that, I will open it up to council colleagues if there are questions of the panelists or central staff for any clarifications before we move forward. Councilmember Muscata.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to the Friends of the Waterfront and our Seattle community for continuing to work towards a resolution here. And I, I appreciate it. And I also want to make sure that we state into the record that this was a condition, required condition established in Ordinance 125761 that set up the waterfront operations that we see there. And it's notes in this ordinance that the operator, in this case, Friends of the Waterfront, was required to establish labor harmony protocols. And I'm very pleased, as the chair noted, that we have received both your testimony today and letters from MLK Labor that have noted that they are also satisfied by the agreement that they are entering into with this labor harmony agreement that you all have been able to find common ground and to ratify. So thank you so much for that work. And I just want to quote from MLK Labor's communication that the chair and I received. We are pleased to have reached an agreement last week that meets the interest of all parties and sets up the Seattle waterfront to be a place where the prosperity and opportunity generated by the park will be shared and the workers who make it run will be invested in. As we look forward to what the park will be in the future, knowing that this public investment will generate the compounding public good of high quality, high road jobs where workers can be assured that they will be free to have a voice on the job and the dignity of the family wage gives Seattle labor movement much pride. We are proud to have been part of the campaign to establish the park back in 2019 to have been the workforce who labored through the pandemic to build the park. And now to be the workers who operate the park. Again, thank you very much for those words from Executive Secretary MLK Labor, Katie Garrow, and also thanks to the ongoing conversations that we've had with both Friends of the Waterfront and folks who are part of our city public-private partnership here. There is many public dollars going into this as well as public nonprofit and private partnership across the waterfront here. And I'm really thrilled that today we can celebrate this being a public benefit for both the residents, the tourists, and the workers who are going to bring this vision to fruition. Congratulations, everybody, and thanks for the hard work to make this happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Muscata. Are there any other comments or questions from committee members? Seeing none, I am going to go ahead and move Council Bill 120590. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Well, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the council bill?
Councilmember Herbold.
Yeah.
Council President Juarez.
Aye.
Councilmember Muscata.
Aye.
Chair Lewis. Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Chair, there are four in favor and unopposed.
Excellent. Uh, the measure passes and we'll go to the next full council meeting. Uh, thank you so much. And thank you again to the leadership of everybody on the call. And, uh, this was a big, uh, this was a big lift today. So I'm really looking forward to getting this, getting this out the door and continuing to move our waterfront forward. So thank you so much. Uh, okay, we are, we are getting close to the end here, everybody. Uh, will the clerk please read item five into the record?
Council bill one, two, zero, six, zero, four. An ordinance relating to the Seattle Center Department, authorizing the Seattle Center Director to execute for and on behalf of the city of Seattle, an agreement with New Rising Sun for the presentation of the annual Bumbershoot Music and Arts Festival at the Seattle Center and related events and activities throughout the year, superseding resolution two, nine, zero, one, seven, repealing ordinance one, one, seven, five, two, two, and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Clerk. Uh, and we are joined by a similar panel, uh, um, to discuss this. And, um, uh, frequent viewers of the committee will be familiar with, um, with the return, um, of, uh, Mark Avery Jones. Um, so should I turn this over again to you, Marshall, to introduce the panel? And then, uh, we'll, we'll discuss the next steps.
Thank you, Chair. That sounds great. Marshall Foster interim director still at Seattle Center.
And I'm Mark Jones. I'm the, one of the division directors overseeing marketing and some of our business integration and oversight of the bumper shoot relationship.
Great. Um, so thi- this is, I believe, our second committee presentation, uh, on the future of, um, um, a bumper shoot at the Seattle Center campus. Uh, and that presentation that we have previously reviewed is attached to the agenda and the central staff memo. Um, in terms of how we, we proceed with this, I don't think we're really, um, asking for another presentation from the presenters, but just giving another opportunity for committee members to engage and maybe giving an opportunity, uh, for any updates before we, we move forward with the council bill. Uh, so maybe I'll just start there. Um, if, uh, if Mark or Marshall want to give us, um, uh, any new information since the last time the committee checked in on this. Uh, or otherwise, we can, I mean, we can proceed with, with the underlying legislation. Uh, so why don't you guys go first and then I'll open it up to questions?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Chair. I will say, I think we are, um, similar to the last item, you know? Uh, you've got the key elements of the agreement, um, terms in the last presentation. Um, we did have an opportunity to kind of clarify some aspects of how the bumper works program, uh, will operate and the benefits it will provide, as well as how, um, discounted free tickets will be distributed. Um, which was a question I believe council member Herbold had. I don't know if Mark, you want to take a few minutes, uh, just a minute and chat about that particular aspect?
Sure. I'm happy to. I think, you know, thank you again for the opportunity to come here. And we're looking forward to moving this legislation forward. We did have some follow-up, um, information that we did seek out with our partners of both New Rising Sun and then Third Stone, the nonprofit that helps produce not only the festival itself, but the bumper, um, shoot workforce development program. So we did find additional information as, as discussed in the last meeting. We are very excited. This is something that's actually above and beyond, um, what is needed. But Bumbershoot is going to be offering 5,000 free, um, tickets to the festival this year. Uh, this is through basically a partnership with Amazon, um, to help distribute tickets through nonprofits that serve youth and families, low income folks, um, people of color, immigrants and special needs. So they're actually specifically doing outreach, which is being led by James Miles, who I think several of the council members know, uh, the executive director of Third Stone. He's really trying to lean in, um, through direct conversations with as many nonprofits as possible in the Seattle community. Um, he's also working on doing follow-up surveys, determining the needs and requests of these, um, how these tickets will be distributed. Uh, they're working throughout the summer, leading up to the festival on September second and third, uh, to do this outreach and do this engagement to make sure that they have good distribution of those tickets. And they get it to, get it in the hands of folks who will actually utilize the tickets. I know that was one of the questions and concerns about how that's happening. Uh, Third Stone will actually add in the names of the folks into the ticketing system and distribute them through that method. Uh, they're going to guarantee the distribution. And then, you know, obviously, as many folks, they'll track folks that show up. So we'll have some, um, good probably data afterwards to see what the return on those, that distribution was. Another area was the Bumbershoot Works, the Bumbershoot Workforce Development Program, which is one of the public benefits related to this agreement. The agreement itself outlines the conditions, um, for allocation of $100,000 to help start this program. There were some questions about, you know, what does this actually serve? And there's some additional information that was provided that I think is great for the public to understand, too. This Bumbershoot Workforce Development Program is basically a program that happens through April of October every year. Uh, the initial funding that the city council supported will help jumpstart it in the first year. They're planning on engaging with youth year-round on employment and training opportunities in the creative, um, industries world, specifically in the music and entertainment area. Bumbershoot is also very excited to, you know, have these interns who are paid, um, to work directly with organizations from, they were at Folklife, they're going to be at the Bite of Seattle coming up, Pride Fest, um, and many other partners throughout the city. They're actually going to have specific internships at the Crocodile, for example. Uh, they're also working, I know, with council chair Lewis in some of the, the training and workshop programs and working directly. This program specifically this year will serve 16 interns, um, that are ages 17 to 26. They're paid $20 an hour. Um, they're, they're folks throughout the community with a really diverse background, um, from different communities. So very excited about the diversity of some of the, um, statistics that we saw of who's being served here, specifically people of color, many in the LGBTQ plus community. Uh, the program is going to be focused on lighting design, sound design, set design, stage design, box office, marketing, all kinds of areas of the, of this industry. Um, a combination of hands-on workshops. Um, again, as I mentioned, these are paid internships where they get about 50 hours a month through the timeframe. Um, so these kids and folks that are being trained are, um, getting paid for their work. And then, um, there's kind of different levels of this. They have workshops. They also have, um, some other shadow shifts. These are actually where kids are onsite, shadowing with professionals in the community. Then there's specific internship at, um, the Triple Door, Crocodile. And then in August through September, there's the, a specific bumper shoot internship program where they're learning and, and getting ready for the festival, Labor Day weekend at Seattle Center. So that's also followed by a graduation on September 18th. And I know, um, James and, and crew wants, um, representation, would love to see council members at that graduation to see the kind of fruits of their investment that they're making in the community. So lots of good stuff here. Those were kind of two of the big elements that we followed up on. And we're just very excited of the support that we've had, not only from the council, but the city or, you know, staff at Seattle Center to get this festival restarted since it's been in hiatus since 2019 with new producing partners. So we look forward to this agreement, um, moving forward and, and making the magic happen for the 50th bumper shoot, um, on Labor Day weekend.
Great. Well, now I'm all excited. So, uh, that's, that's why we scheduled this hearing.
Yeah.
Um, excellent. Uh, anything from council central staff?
Uh, I don't think, uh, I do not have anything to add. The, the reading of the item into the record covered the, uh, bare bones of the legislation and, uh, and, uh, I believe that, uh, uh, Mark and Marshall have followed up with questions the council members had between the previous meeting and this meeting.
Great. Um, do colleagues have any, uh, final questions or any follow-up? Uh, council member Herbold.
I just want to, uh, say thank you, uh, for the responsiveness to my line of questioning, both, um, around the distribution of free tickets, uh, and the bumper works program, um, as specifically as it relates to distribution of free tickets. Really excited for the partnership with Third Stone and, um, really appreciate the offer, uh, to report back on the success of the distribution approach. Um, as I've mentioned before, um, it is not uncommon, uh, for, uh, the city to require free admission as part of, uh, public benefits package. Um, but sometimes we hear from our cultural institutions that those don't always get used. So really appreciate your willingness to, um, to work with Third Stone in, um, in monitoring and not just, um, which partners, uh, nonprofit partners, um, are effective in getting these out, but, um, how they are, they are used so that if, if necessary, we can adjust our practices, um, as we go year after year and get better and better. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Moskata.
Hello again. Um, sorry, I'm trying to do this from my phone. Uh, thank you for bearing with me. Um, so thanks, thanks for the summary here and you use the word jumpstart. So I'm going to use this as an opportunity to talk about jumpstart progressive payroll tax. Um, and I'm doing this because there's been a few announcements lately that are really exciting investments in our city. And often the jumpstart investment doesn't get, uh, to be part of the headline. So for example, uh, with the city park reopening that was celebrated last week, there was 1.3 million dollars included from jumpstart, um, for part of the activation of that park. It's part of the economic resilience section. As we thought about jumpstart in 2020, we knew that, you know, part of the desire was to support small businesses and create community gathering spaces and really try to help to not only infuse, um, uh, you know, a sense of economic well-being into our community, but also a sense of health and well-being with social cohesion. So it's really exciting to see those dollars go into action. But again, you know, it's not exactly like jumpstart's part of that headline. Here in, um, the bumper shoot, we, in investments in the 2023 adopted budget, we included 100,000 for jumpstart to help fund, um, bumper shoot to add workforce development and training program opportunities for bumper shoots future bumper works program. And you started to mention a little bit about it. Um, uh, folks might not know, these are jumpstart economic revitalization dollars, similar to the concept I just mentioned a minute ago, which are intended to really support a more equitable recovery for our local economy, um, support activation and revitalization of small businesses and create opportunity for workers. So I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the bumper works program and how the jumpstart dollars are being used or deployed for workforce development and training and how that then feeds into the return of bumper shoot going forward?
So, yeah, thank you for that question and, um, acknowledgement of those funds. And thank you all again for the support of providing that. I think it's money well spent as this, um, program really gets kicked off in, in alignment with the return of new producing partners for bumper shoot. So it's a very exciting opportunity to lean in to, you know, specifically the funding is going to help support these 16 interns and this paid internship opportunities that help really do the training in the specific creative economy world. So it's a series of, you know, as I mentioned before, there's a series of workshops that kind of kick off the program. Um, then there's hands-on work where, where, where folks in the program actually shadow at events. So they're shadowing people on soundboards. They're shadowing people stage managing. They're shadowing people in box office. Those are getting really hands-on visible work. And this is, you know, this is something that I, I had the opportunity to do as an intern, um, working in media, working in events. So this is how you get trained to be in, in these environments with that, that hands-on element. In addition, there's the, the specific work as a paid intern at certain facilities. So this is something that's, that's happening specifically this year at the Crocodile. Um, and, and I'm spacing on the other name of the venue at the moment. Um, I forget what I just said. I lost my notes. Um, but also other events and activities and festivals throughout, um, the summer. So this is also, you know, culminates specifically tied to bumper shoot. So these kids are doing these activities throughout the summer. So they can be real, really active in supporting actual the execution of bumper shoot, um, as one of the, you know, the, the internships, but also the team members putting on that festival. So this is, you know, truly kind of a, you know, start to finish of, um, of getting these, um, members of this program really through a whole summer of activities and events, uh, that gives them that training. I think one of the other really great elements in the public benefits that kind of aligned with some of the areas you're talking about, council member Moskata, is related to, uh, other commitments to the diverse programming. So not only is this workforce development program, the bumper works programming happening, but they're acti- actively engaging in BIPOC LGBTQ plus and other communities in, in the training program, but also the artists, um, mix, also in their hiring practices. Uh, they're also have a goal of 25% or more of winby businesses contracted for the festival. So there's just, there's multiple levels of this that will really shine and continue that. And, you know, again, I'm so appreciative for that funding. Um, I know James Miles at Third Stone is just really appreciative of that work and the growth, um, that's ahead. You know, this is the first year and they hope to expand it. And they've really got the energy and support and momentum, um, fun, from funders, from sponsors, from private entities to really expand this program. So this is just the beginning. And, you know, the agreement in front of us would potentially get us 15 years, um, of this investment in the community at a really no risk to the city, but, and, and then with the jumpstart funding too, to help get that going. So thank you for calling that out and recognizing that.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Thanks for that summary. Am I off mute?
Yeah.
Great. Uh, thanks for that summary. I love that you said this is just the beginning. And I think that that's a really good takeaway for all of the work that we're collectively trying to do to make sure that, you know, the quote-unquote reset after many years of hardship during COVID is, um, is seen as an opportunity for us to really center, um, folks who've been hardest hit by COVID in the recovery efforts and to try to create new pathways into good living wage jobs and the shadowing and the training that you mentioned. And, uh, especially having this be an opportunity for folks in the arts and culture world to have access to good living wage jobs, um, and that we're supporting that as a public investment and the public good. Love it. So thanks for featuring that. And I just, uh, you know, PSA for the broader, um, council and community. We're going to probably be trying to do more to up, uplift all of the investments that jumpstart is making in some of the announcements that are happening. Um, two weeks ago was childcare investments. Last week I mentioned City Hall Park. This week we're excited about this partnership with all of you. Um, obviously a smaller scale investment, but it's just the beginning, as you noted. So very excited to continue this partnership with, um, bumper shoot.
Excellent. Thank you so much, uh, Councilmember Moskata. Um, with that, uh, I think we've exhausted all the questions of the committee. I, I do similarly want to thank the panel, uh, for being very thorough between our last presentation and today and responding to current concerns and questions that were raised in the, in the more substantive presentation, um, previously. And, uh, with that, I think we're ready to vote on this today, uh, given the response I'm getting from committee colleagues. So I'm going to go move council bill one, two, zero, six, oh, four.
Second.
Is there a second? Seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of council bill one, two, zero, six, oh, four?
Council member Herbold. Um, council member Herbold, could you please, uh, record your vote again? I didn't hear it.
Sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, council president Juarez.
Aye.
Council member Moskata.
Aye.
Chair Lewis.
Aye.
Chair, there are four in favor and unopposed.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, this piece of legislation will also go to the June 27th meeting. There will be lots of items from this committee at that meeting. Um, that's really exciting. Uh, but with that, colleagues, we do not have any additional agenda items. If there's nothing for the good of the order, and I don't see anything for the good of the order, it is 3:28 PM and this committee is adjourned.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Go jumpstart.
Just kidding.